Call the meeting to order any items from the public. If not, need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda if there's no modifications for Thursday office decision.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Moved on to the purchase order, any questions for Tracy on the purchase order? Tracy, can you come up front please? We got a couple of questions for her. Huh? Did I stutter? Dan, didn't you say you had some questions?
Is she the only obstinate one we have in the audience?
She is.
Everybody else comes right up, don't they? Hmm?
Alright, Dan, you had a question for her? So you gotta find us, you gotta give us a couple of minutes.
I'm looking.
Mr. President.
What?
Yes.
My curious question, I see that our gas bill's 61434, how is that compared to what we've done before?
On behalf of the county.
You act like you're all nervous, Tracy.
I'm a little bit, I don't like this.
Our gas is around about 62% under where it was.
Because I remember those numbers being in the thousands even in summer.
We will have a full, Gary's working on a full analysis now.
Are you answering the question for Tracy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
He has my back.
We had a dashboard that was provided, but he worked with him a little bit, so I do know that he's concerned.
Is that, is that natural gas?
Yeah.
Well then why are we being charged on another bill for propane tank?
That's the rental for the actual tank. A hundred dollars. That's annual.
For what tank?
Probably everything.
It is at 700 annual in short.
They don't have natural gas.
No. We've always talked about, we should have natural gas there. Or we put in mini splits.
So we're paying a hundred dollars a month for, is that an annual fee or is the monthly fee?
For what?
The tank.
The tank is annual.
Annual.
For the, for the amount of propane we buy, I think you can probably get that way.
So, so, so isn't it much better price to, I mean, are we ever going to, are we ever going to stop using that gas there?
Might, because it could be mini splits.
Well, mini splits cost more to operate than gas.
But, Tracy, what we gonna do?
Penny, Tracy?
Maybe we, maybe we should.
I'm her mother.
No, but I mean, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be saving money if we put it, and, and what is the rate for the propane?
Why are you, I don't know, in front of you.
Well, so, so.
Let's get it, two dollars.
How many gallons a year?
But you know how this works?
I do.
The propane, if you use a rented tank, you pay almost twice as much for propane as you do, and you pay for the rent on the tank, as you do for a tank that you owned, putting propane into it, right?
They give you a good price on that.
I think it was a 10.
Yeah. We're locked in.
Automatic, so they never lock down there.
We're locked in with the rate, with the fire board and everything else.
That was all, and then it's been by the first.
Sure, and we piggybacked on it, right? But the rent on the tanks, we shouldn't be charged as well.
I'll check with that room.
Okay, and then maybe you can check in and give us a cost analysis of how much it costs, see if the natural gas wants to run down.
You're a funny name.
Hey.
I would give a.
All I can tell you is, we was told, we was told, we was told that you were going on vacation next week to get you up here and make your life miserable before you left.
That's terrible.
Huh?
I'm like, I don't even know where, I just, you know, totally like making other stuff right now, but the bills are paid, I can tell you that.
Tracy, you have to remember where all those questions are coming from.
Why did you? Why did?
I seriously was asking about the gas.
Maybe Barnhart.
Tracy, why'd you bring an eggplant up?
In case you need me to sign something.
We'll get you comfortable with the mic. You're good, enjoy your vacation next week. You've earned it.
She acts like she didn't know that was coming.
Now, you know, it's, I'm, I'm like you, although I'm, as you all know, I can talk pretty freely, but for me to stand up and give a prayer is very difficult for me to do. So, you know, maybe we can learn off each other. Change in status, we have a new hire received from the Honorable Virginia Sine Circuit Clerk for Donna Lee Bernhardt, effective August 10th, 2020, with an annual salary of $25,554. Letter resignation received from the Sessions Office for Hillary Barrow, and effective July 17th, 2020. Any other change in status or any questions on those? We have minutes for July 23rd, everyone was present, any changes or corrections on those? If not, we're moving on to the county council calendar. So, be here in the chambers next Thursday. And Boarding and Commissions, we have Fire Board next week. So, we have Ms. Moth on W E P M tomorrow. We have two, on Monday, the 10th, L A P C at 2:30. 5:00 PM Water District, 6:00 PM Farm Land Protection, 6:00 PM Airport Authority. Nothing on Tuesday, the 11th. On Wednesday, the 12th, 9:30 AM Development Authority, 6:00 PM Roundhouse. Fire Board on the 13th, at, on, on Thursday at 6:30 PM. Any changes or corrections on Boards and Commissions?
Mr. President, by May next Thursday, if you recall, is it all day meeting, there'll be interviews in the area. Council, Vice President Elliot did not appear himself.
He did say he would call in.
I can't call in, yeah.
Also, surplus reminder that our surplus property auction is scheduled for Saturday, August 22nd, two weeks from this coming Saturday. Edwards Auction will be conducted, the auction's online and on site. And we had gotten a sign off from the, to conduct the auction, so.
Is that August 28th?
August 22nd.
Yeah, I don't even have that on my calendar.
It's actually on your calendar, in your packet, at very bottom.
My calendar goes from the 21st to the 24th, doesn't have a Saturday.
Turn to Tracy.
Maybe we should call it back up and talk about it.
Tracy, I'll come back up so we can talk to you about the calendar situation. Next on the consent agenda, we have a resolution acceptance and administration of the fiscal years 2020, 21, justice reinvestment treatment supervision grant, any questions on that? We have a canceled check from the County Clerk's Finance Office and the resolution in support of the acceptance of administration of the 2020-21 Community Corrections Grant Program.
So the state doesn't take checks out of it?
Actually, it's a statement.
Oh.
That is a statement that we make annually to the prosecuting attorneys. So, so they actually, they actually made it through the payments again.
Alright, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's a movement, President.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Hess, good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have another power for you, so we should be busy today, Mike, we.
You have four personal tax exoneration due to taxpayer error.
Yes, sir, yes, first of all, we got the total of four of them, and the reasons that listed there, most of them, forget to mark through the, the vehicles that they sold or traded. And that's something, maybe I'll ask you all when we consider on the taxpayer error. What we, we used to do would be, if somebody did want to mark through their vehicle, we give them a one-time exempt. We'd say, okay, I'll do it again, mark it in their file. Because a lot of times the owner forgets to do that. And some of them are three or $400, and you know, feel bad for them really, because, you know, they, they think that, well, you know, we keep track of that stuff, we give it to DMV, it's alright, they'll take care of whatever. But, anyway.
We actually did that when I first got here.
We did that, we did that for a while.
And, and I was told that it wasn't, wouldn't work and it was a bad situation, and.
It wasn't a bad situation, it was a good situation.
Well, I think it was a bad situation on determine who qualified and who didn't qualify. And, and then we changed the facts because, because of what I was told would happen did happen. But we'll, we'll give it some consideration.
Okay, well, I mean, I just, you know. But we do that, we have four, all there for this past eight percent, total of $496.43.
Guarantee motion on the four personal tax exoneration due to taxpayer error.
Mr. President, I move to accept the four personal property tax exoneration, taxpayer error, $496.43.
Motion been made, seconded, any discussion?
Do you have, do you have some, you have some complaints, you say you're, you're expressing a concern about that, do you, have you been getting concerned?
Well, we get, you get the fact that it's all.
So can you forward some of them so that I can?
Well, it's first biggest conversations with people, you know, person that have anything to write, but mostly people, a lot of them are older people. And that doesn't, that doesn't mean anything, whether they're old or young, if you don't mind, I don't like it all.
So nobody was concerned enough to send you a letter about it?
We don't usually get letters.
Okay.
It's verbally concerned by a lot of people.
Well, if you, how did you before keep tabs on who?
We just marked in the file, in the personal property file, we make a note of it, keep it in the file, that they, that they, had they already had one time exempt, if they forgot to mark it, they called, or whatever, that we revide one time to do that, because if they did it again, then you, they may. A lot of people just don't rely, just don't pay, you know. So, and they pay, wind up paying for vehicles that they don't have.
Alright.
But, anyway, that's, you know, that's your own decision.
Well, I think, I think if we even did consider that once again, I think there'd have to be a field process.
I think one of the concerns was, if I remember, Doug, was it would lead over into the farm exam, but you have to have that done by the.
September 1st.
September 1st. You didn't make it by September 1st, and there was a thought process that says, well, you know, you can't, because you're giving it here and not here, it would be inconsistent.
Well, the other issue is a lot of times with the state, there is a hard to pass rule, you know, just like the $25 penalty pay.
You forget ones.
Well, and the other thing too, I mean, it could say we're splitting hairs a little bit, but, you know, we set our budget on a revenue projection made up by your office. Well, and the other thing too, I mean, it, it could say we're splitting hairs a little bit, but, you know, we set our budget on a revenue projection made up by your office, and every time we do an exoneration, that decreases the, the amount of money that we're supposed to get in that we've already set our budget for. So, it can't be, you know, it's, it's, it's very difficult for us, there's no way of adding taxes on the books, there, every time we exonerate something, it's, it's money coming off the books of, that's coming out of the budget for, that we've already set revenues projections for.
Well, you got money set aside for the exoneration, it's not, it's not from your actual, yeah.
But we, again, there's a lot of things that you and I need to talk about, that may be looking at, trying to do something different, okay? All right, so the next one we have... Like, like, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All nays?
Nay.
All right, the next one I, I need to do, to recuse myself from, I see where my business is on there, so Mr. Delia, if you'd take over for me.
Let me know when you're done.
Okay, you can continue, Mr. Hess.
Okay, the next is, I have on my list here, I hope you guys have it, so, personal property office error, we have, actually have two pages, we have eight, two, six pages on the first page, I have the other here on the second page. And these are all office errors, the reasons that's listed there, the total of both pages comes up to four thousand sixty-one dollars and twelve cents.
Four thousand sixty-one dollars and twelve cents, sixteen personal tax exoneration due to officer, the president re, uh, recused himself, and I'll accept a motion.
Sound move. For the, uh, real property...
Personal.
Personal property tax exoneration.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Barnhart, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on just a second.
Time to go back to work.
Short vacation.
Okay, so the next one we have is office error for real estate, and we have a total of eight, went down eleven of them, and the total amount, total of all the eleven exonerations, come up to eight thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
Need a, entertain a motion on eleven real estate tax exoneration due to officer.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the eleven real estate tax exonerations in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second.
Motion been made second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, we have two consolidations of property.
I do, uh, first one is for, uh, Martinsburg District, uh, the two parcels we're going to put together just to get one tax bill in Edgewood District, parcel fifty-two-one, fifty-two-five, and...
The Martinsburg District, it's a fifty-two...
I'm sorry, well, four is Edgewood District, but it's map four, red letter is good, it's map four parcel, uh, fifty-two-five, fifty-two-five, then Martinsburg District. So we have, we have three of them, well, we have one deconsolidation, will we do both of the consolidations at one time?
Um, I don't see why we couldn't, go ahead.
Okay, the other one's for Terry Agins, the same thing, they had three parcels in the Arden District, map thirteen and map eight, parcel two fifteen, and six, and G fourteen, same thing, they want to put the parcels together and get one tax bill, so.
What the heck happened to the paper there?
What the?
I said to read ahead, looks like the, the paper was all crumbled, but it tore it...
Tracy did that, I guess, when she, uh...
Poor old Tracy.
Put that in there, yeah, I'm waiting, you know.
Maybe we should get her up here and talk about that.
What's the problem?
Mr. President, I'm going to accept two applications to consolidation of property.
Second.
Motion been made second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carried, wait a second, you wasn't here, Tracy? And you're taking off again next week? How many days you get off? All right, we got one deconsolidation.
One deconsolidation, uh, for Janice Dotson, and they want to separate, we had them consolidated, so they want to take them back apart, so we did a deconsolidation for those two parcels.
Entertain the motion, a motion for, uh, the consolidation of property, please.
Sound move. Second.
Motion been made second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries, and then we have two apportionments of assessment for taxpayer final divorce order.
Yes, we do, first one's for Mr. Wesley Smith, Jeremy and Jake, Jessica Smith, we had, uh, two vehicles, total assessed value is seven thousand and six eighty, we want, they want to split the bill, so we split the bill, uh, so we, uh, they got one, uh, Ford Explorer for two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars worth of assessed value, and she got the other one at four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars of assessed value, so, but you want to give both of them to the same thing, though?
Sure.
The other one is for, uh, Butler Mason and Eric Ula, Marie Butler, they had three vehicles, total assessed value of fifteen thousand four ninety-five, and we split the bill up for them, he got two vehicles at four thousand five fifty-four assessed value, and she got the other vehicle at ten thousand nine fifty assessed value, so, that was, those two things I have.
Need a motion to accept the two apportionment of assessments for taxes due to final divorce.
If you have portion of the tax in two separate cases, uh, Butler and, uh...
Smith. All right, have a motion on the floor, you'll have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hess. Boarding meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. President, I had no meetings this week, so it was my compatriot Elaine, I'm sure she would be...
Well, I don't have a lot to talk about, but, but, the, the roundhouse, uh, the roundhouse last week, I was complaining that we didn't have, uh, the checks, and they swore they, they mailed them on the twenty-fourth, and I finally got them on Saturday the first, and got a deposit that they allowed on Monday. And, uh, that's invoice for April and invoice for May that got paid, so now I'm on them for the others.
This was a contract?
Yes, uh, it's just about finished, and we, hold on, there, as far as that's concerned. So, he was waiting for some money because he hadn't, hadn't gotten anything, had to run a call. I want to thank Tammy, uh, for her community service, uh, she had a gentleman that was a bricklayer, and he's done a hundred hours of brick restoration, uh, in the area between the bridge and the roundhouse, where there had been a lot of water that had come down, of course, those were fragile bricks and sand base, and put everything back, you know, just absolutely did a wonderful job in that area. If you got any more bricklayers, we could sure use them, they can put in a hundred hours, and that was a, a lot of, a lot of good, uh, if we hadn't paid for it, it would probably have been between a five and ten thousand dollar job from what he got done.
It probably wouldn't hurt to seal that brick down there.
You can't, well, I don't know if you can or not, I don't know if they'll let you.
Uh, you won't, you won't see it, seal it.
Well, that's...
Yeah, there's, there, I mean, that'll help for the grout, long-term, it'll help for the grout, that type of brick is, uh, um...
Very porous.
Huh?
Very porous.
Well, it's, it's not near, it's not near as much as the brick they have today, I mean, the day, the brick we use today is much more porous than, than, uh, the brick that was back in the day.
But what happens a lot of times is the brick, and the water gets in the brick, and then it freezes.
Right, that one pops it open.
Yeah.
But, uh, I'm gonna, I'll have some pictures, uh, we're, we're working on that this, this week. Uh, the other one, I think we got Electrician, it's doing some, some work for us too, so that's absolutely phenomenal, things we're getting done.
Is that, is that part of a questioning process when you have a, um, when you have somebody come in and, and you, uh, for a community service, you, you say, okay, what, what do you do for a living, yeah?
Well, you know, I think it's much more better use of person's time than picking up litter if they've got those skills, and that guy, the guy was ecstatic, he said he didn't know the roundhouse was there, and he's going to volunteer some additional hours, and he's a full-time, he's, that is, the reason he got it all done at one time is that Maryland's closed down, and he works for Callis, and he was supposed to be doing some work in Hagerstown, and the area he was to work in was closed down because of the pandemic, so he got everything done in two weeks.
Sometimes you give up.
Yes, hit the, hit the mother lode on that. Uh, the lady for the doughboy, uh, the new plates, because we've got to put the names, additional names and things on the plates, they're eight thousand dollars a piece, so that's twenty-four, so we're looking at forty-five to fifty thousand by the time we get, uh, the, uh, restoration of that done.
What was the original estimate?
The original estimate wasn't on the plates, it was just on the, uh, doughboy, it was like twenty, twenty-four. Uh, and so the plates, because we were hoping that we could use the plates and re-use them, and they've tried to see what they can do, and they can't, they have to be totally recast.
Didn't it, uh...
Yeah, because there's, what happened is, uh, under, with the, with the situation, there was like forty or fifty names that were left off that were broken counting, and then, uh, the, the Afro-Americans, uh, were a separate area, so in order to, we're going to be inclusive and put it all back together correctly.
They did the same thing in Emmitsburg on the statue up there, that, uh, many years ago, when it was first put up, there was a group that was admitted from, and then they redone that whole, whole thing up there. Very good.
And there's some, like, there's some interesting folks on that, so there'll be some interesting tales when we get to it. So, that's, uh, what, uh, has been going on, it's both mostly paper trails, trying to, and telephone calls, and working with folks.
All right, Mr. Delia.
Um, I'm trying to think, I don't think I had any, uh, um, actual, uh, official board meeting this last week, so...
Hey, Mr. Walker.
I had Planning Commission meeting on Monday, which was, uh, conducted in person and on Zoom, we had a, just a little issue with the, uh, the host computer, we did it on two public hearings, there was no comments, but everybody could hear what being said, never seen that pass, but, uh, they weren't able to communicate with the, with representatives of the... I think we got to vote work down again, and that's, it'll be better next time.
All right, and this time I have nothing to report on, so, any activity on the boards and commissions?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to, um, reappoint John Myers to the Stormwater District.
All right, have a motion on the floor, you'll have a second, second, any discussion?
We, we had discussed, we had discussed, this board, this board is, um, being operated still by the, uh, about the same group that operates the sewer board, and we had discussed early on, then, when that board was formed, that we were going to have a discussion to change that and possibly put other members on, and that hasn't, uh, that hasn't happened, is, um, is that still something that we should discuss at some point, or are we going to just keep it that way?
No, I think we, I think it's going for discussion, I think we still got some things that, that's going through, and they're, they're trying to modify the permit and stuff like that, but I think that, yeah, that was our intention, because it really needs to be two separate boards, because it's, it's kind of like they're, they're cost sharing a little bit.
Exactly.
And so there's mix and mingle, I, I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean, it's all savings.
Each side should be independent to look at what's going on and make discussions and, and, uh, recommendations for that particular board, whereas right now you could have, and I'm not saying there is, but you could have, uh, one board influencing the decisions in the other side of it to benefit the one, the, one of the other board, too.
Kind of like a check and balance.
Right.
Yeah, all right, so you still want to stick to your motion, right?
Yeah, I do.
All right.
Yeah, it is, is, spot is up to the end of the month, so...
There's a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Could, uh, and, and, not, not, not to pick on Tracy, but maybe we can get, uh, when you get back, no hurry, um, follow up on, uh, on the criminal justice board, we have three applications that have been sent out, we don't have any responses from them. Good, Jose? Okay, he's going to continue, he's going to get it back? Okay, thank you.
Come here for a second, please. Personal taxes exoneration, I recused myself, went from one page to the other, signed the second page, and then went first, and one of them, another copy, like, half of X is there, but...
Put Tracy, put Tracy away. All right, next on our agenda is Canet Petri, uh, fiduciary supervisor state count for the month of August, still fifty-one, Canet?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm so excited.
Very well.
Um, the fiduciary department has presented today a confirmation and approval, fifty-one, your final order of someone's account, beginning with Robert Gordon Malvaro, Mary Elizabeth Andrews, Joyce A. Arana, Constance Joan Barrett, Timothy Stephen Bernhardt, Nancy Jean Bishop, Mary Ann Boone, Gary Lee Bowman, Mary Jean Buck, Margaret T. Butts, also known as Margaret Virginia Lucas Butts, Gerald Catlick, Mary Kate Chambers, also known as Mary Catherine Chambers, David Lee Cole, Lisa Lynn Francer, as an interim settlement, James Stuart Bailey III, Paul William De Haven, Mark Williamson De Barney, Harry Eric Eckert, Margaret Dan Everhart, Jackie Lee Roy Fincham, Thomas Robert Fishburne, James Franklin Deau, Nancy Lee Thompson Garcia, also known as Nancy T. Garcia, George Jeremiah Lencer Golden, Janet R. Hamilton, also known as Janet Louise Hamilton, Margaret Skelly Hensel, Bert Littleby James, Lester Ray Landis Senior, Marcella Leary, George Delmas Leopold Jr., Ryan Andrew Martin, William Joel Dean Martin, also known as, same name, spelled a little differently, William Joel Dean Martin, Charles Edward Moth, Regina Lucille Cobb, Hutton McCormick, Norman G. McDonald, Frank Ray Moorefield, Anna Virginia Shriver Newperk, also known as Anna S. Newperk, Ronald Alan Pajic, Carol Ann Pancake, Dorothea Evelyn Peterson, also known as Dorothea H. Peterson, Johnny Press Graves Jr., Wanda Lorraine Reed, Karen Colleen Reinhardt, Jane Meredith Sykes, Ralph L. Slonaker, also known as Ralph Isaac Slonaker, I'm sorry, that was Ralph I. Slonaker, also known as Ralph Isaac Slonaker, Sandra K. Sowers, Kenneth David Lawson, Jane Virginia West, Karen I. Westco, Dana J. Woolison, and Thomas Zerall.
All right, um, entertain a motion on the fifty-one estate accounts for the month of August.
Right, I'm going to be accepting the fifty-one, presented, state seven of accounts, I want to...
All right, have a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, thank you, ma'am.
This is this month.
Sir, should be this month, yeah?
Always, right?
Pardon?
Always, right?
Always, yeah, it's not a business that is stagnant, for sure, sometimes we might want it to be, it's not a good, good catalyst that creates business for our office, but...
Definitely happens.
Are you, are you finding many still, too, that are back, but haven't been closed, if you're trying to get reopened again?
Funny you asked her that question, we just had that discussion.
We were just talking about that this morning, um, there are too many for me items that are unsettled, that either have not even gone through the second step of the process, or when it closed, or pending and never effectively opened, so, there's a large that... or pending and never effectively opened. So there's a large backlog.
So is there a process to do that or do you just, you have to contact some family member or, or do you have to pump the process to close them out?
There, there is newly enacted legislation, there's new code sections that allow a fiduciary office to administratively close an estate.
Over certain names, true.
Yeah. If there, if the estate is more than three years old with absolutely no activity in the last twelve months, then there is a process to reach out to the personal representative or administrator or executor again to require them to continue action on the estate within thirty days of the notice. If they don't do that, then we can present a list of estates to be administratively closed before county council. If you issue an order to proceed that way, then it's another thirty day notice to the personal representative. And that's not just the personal representative, it's the personal representative of all beneficiaries, the creditors and the surety or corporate bond entity.
Is that any, is that any known ones?
Well, we can't contact unknowns.
I, I understand. I understand that, but that doesn't mean legislature didn't write that they had all to be notified. Because if legislature wrote that they all had to be and you have no way of getting ahold of somebody and then it comes back that, oh, I didn't get notified and I was one of the, I was one of the.
Just didn't get.
Yeah. Why wasn't I notified?
The legislature lists them as known, but there is another required thirty day publication, which presumably would allow notice to those that are unknown, that happen to see them.
I know, I know with legal mumble jumble, it's all in the words.
It is. And this statute is too new to have been tested or evaluated. To the best of my knowledge, it's not being implemented anywhere in the state yet.
Is there a provision if something, if the knowing folks are deceased? I mean, that ends up being the executor of the estate is deceased and then that, you know, can't, it has to fall there.
What the statute requires is that you contact those people with the last known address. So whatever was listed last, now if that happens to generate inquiries from beneficiaries of one of those people who have passed away, then of course we would have to establish once contacted who they are and notify them also. So a little bit of an administrative nightmare.
It looks like it's going to be good for the post office.
Yeah, yeah, and the journal.
So is this, is this something that you're expecting an ex, an expansion in your staffing in order to handle this?
I think it would have to be a necessary requirement, at which point we attempt to start clearing them all up. It's not something I don't think we can do the very first time they're presented. And I, the approach would have to be that we start with ones that we've had in first doubt already. Because there are those out there that, that they're in a state, no one is doing anything. And someone wants something to happen, but they're not willing to take it on. I think we have to start with those, squeaky wheel, you know what I mean?
I got you.
And then go backwards from there.
And my concern that I had was not making sure that it did everything right, you know, to get it closed. Personally, I had a couple just hanging out.
Yeah, get it done.
Well, you would be surprised, the number of estates that get opened so that someone can get access to something. And that's all they ever do. They come in and open a state with a letter of administration and don't proceed at all because they actually want them to get access to something. And the environment is changing as to who's requiring a letter of administration. We have had people come in and ask for a letter of administration and have to open the state because a local healthcare facility, hospital, nursing home, et cetera, is holding something. Personal possessions, a refund, something that they will not disperse to anyone until the letter of possession is given. Landlords are requiring that to access apartments. We even have people who have named beneficiaries, life insurance or investment companies, and they are requiring one, permission for named beneficiary to obtain those possessions, so.
I even had one time they required they had a letter of administration to open a grave site.
Well, we were told that there was a letter of administration needed by a local funeral home to dispose of a body. Now, how, how they anticipated us issuing a letter of administration when they wouldn't issue a death certificate, I have no idea. Because we couldn't, we can't open them without a death certificate.
We've actually done that for a long time with many storage units. When somebody dies, they have the many storage unit and then we, obviously, we, we just, we just give it to whoever is in charge of the estate. We just let them have it and we don't even charge them a bill for it. We just take possession of it. But they have to prove, prove to us and.
And sign here.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there are a lot more people out there and I guess that's the advent of the environment. Everyone wants to make sure that they're not turning something over to someone that doesn't have the talent to get it. But requiring that someone come and get a letter of administration to pick up your loved one's clothing and cell phone from the hospital seems a little bit burdensome to me. Just my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, looks like we have no stake hearings to schedule either, right?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like there was three mice in the room this morning. And they were on it. All right, thank you. All right, this time I'll take a quick break because we have a ten forty-five, the one we were scheduled for. Sorry about that, Patty.
Hey, Doug.
Yeah, yeah. Great, great, here.
It's a little taller than the last.
Alright, we're back in session.
I see he's a little taller than the last legal council.
Not too much. Alright, next our agenda and order for the Burke County Building Commission for the construction and renovation of 520 South Raleigh Street. And you're gonna tell us a little bit about the order so we can take a vote?
So, this is where another step in the process of getting the bond and lease agreement for the construction of the airport center at 520 South Raleigh. This order has a bunch of legalese in it, but essentially it's just giving Council President Cupp and Haver the authority to then enter into a lease agreement with the building commission. Because we have, because West Virginia's laws, we have to do this whole process of containing funding to build the airport center. And also enter into a bond revenue refunding agreement. Those two agreements will be entered into until the closing on 25th. But this is a step in the process that the council needs to go ahead and get Mr. President Cupp's order into it. It's also approving the whole project generally. The bond amount is for, exactly, up to not exceed $9 million. It also includes refunding of the 2011 bonds, which I think Moore would explain to a couple weeks ago.
I'll go right again, but it was actually 2007 bond at the 2011.
A little taller than the last.
Alright, we're back in session.
I see he's a little taller than the last legal council.
Not too much.
Alright, next on our agenda is an order for the Burke County Building Commission for the construction and renovation of 520 South Raleigh Street. So, and you're gonna tell us a little bit about the order so we can take a vote?
So, this is where another step in the process of getting the bond and lease agreement for the construction of the Airport Center at 520 South Raleigh. This order, it has a bunch of legalese in it, but essentially, it's just giving Council President Cuppen Haver the authority to then enter into a lease agreement and with the building commission. Because we have, because West Virginia's laws, we have to do this whole process of containing funding to build the Airport Center. And also enter into a bond revenue refunding agreement. This one, those two agreements will be entered into until the closing on 25th. But this is a step in the process that the council needs to go ahead and get Mr. President everything forward. It's also approving the whole project generally. The bond amount is for, exactly, but it's for.
Up to not exceed nine million dollars.
It also includes refunding of the 2011 bonds, which I think Norwood explained a couple of weeks ago.
I'll go right again, but it was actually 2007 bond at the 2011 bond redone. Now this will do the 2011 bond. So.
Is the structure still with the Sheriff's Department and all that? Is it still all together? Is that how we're doing it?
Yeah, so basically, we brought it, or I brought it to Greg Isaacson, knowing what's attention a while back about the bond, or about the property all being under one deed. And I was told that shouldn't be an issue through Greg Isaacson on the bond. In reality, there is a bond, but there is an issue with it. So, everything we spoke about earlier with the 4.2 million dollar bond, not to exceed 4.2, I believe, was for the David Port Center. But naturally, we all know that somebody going to lend you money, they want some type of way to lean the property. And there wasn't a way to do that. So, what we decided to do was to go back and have Greg Isaacson, with giving him the authority to do that, to be able to run numbers on refinancing the 2011 bond with the 2020 bond, which would take it from 4.2 to a little over eight million dollars, but definitely not to exceed nine million. When we do that, we'll keep the same timeframe as we have on the 2011 bond. We're not going to go backwards on time. But at that current projection, it's going to be the same $377,000 in interest payments. And today, I think that from what I see on the graph, it's actually dropped rate wise since then.
We don't know what the rate is, but it's going to be substantial. Unless something really crazy.
Right, so.
So we're gonna get a better rate than the bond was originally anyway?
We got a better rate than 11 than what it was in seven, and now we're going to get a better rate on 2020 than what it was in 2011. So that's, and so when all that happened, and we had to restart the process instead of 4.2 to be not to exceed that million.
Eleven was the renovations of the Sheriff's Department building, and the seven was the actual purchase of the property initially.
Yeah, and actually, even, there was a modification on, modification of re, and maybe it was just redone in 2011, but I thought this was one of the projects we might even modify it, so.
I think that originally in 2007, they paid interest only all that time. We were paying P plus R on the 2011, which was the difference.
Well, it was modified too, and refinanced. Refinanced or modified, I said refinanced, but.
So what we'll do with the proceeds from the bond, and the bond will replace next week people. We'll take the proceeds from the bond and we'll pay off the 2011 series, and then we use the rest of it for finding some other renovations to. The bond, the anticipated bond yield rate next week is already substantially less than what we've been forecasting 60 days ago.
Right, it's below 2% now, right? Or at least I think it is.
It is.
Keeps going this way, they're gonna pay us.
That's what we were, that's what we're trying.
We're hoping for, right? And that's coming, that's, that's coming from a lot of hard work. You know, Mr. Davis has put a lot of time in this, and this council put a lot of time in trying to get our bond rating as superior as possible. And during these tough times, as we know, there's some bond ratings that's going down through the state of West Virginia. So, you know, and we're, even through the COVAD stuff, and, and, and the situation of what the state is in right now on balancing their budget, we was able to hold her ground. So that says a lot.
Huge, huge difference. I mean, 20 years ago, we're, we're, we're close to one-fifth of what interest rates were 20 years ago.
Oh, no. And forty years ago. We're ten, we're ten times more. Time's gotten better with you, Anthony.
As for borrow.
The sad part about it is we gotta figure out how to keep costs down when rates go down, as we spoke about this morning a little bit. Alright, anything else?
I don't think so unless somebody has questions. Bond council will answer.
Alright, entertain a motion to adopt the, and authorize the president to sign the order.
A move.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Anthony. Alright, next on our agenda is Mary Cackley, the none other Mary Cackley, 911 Director Motorola Radio Maintenance Contract. Mary, I was reading an email the other day, and I was about ready to call you about the, I'll let you go and I'll try to find it so I can talk intelligently about it. It's about the fund, the fee, or, you know what I'm talking about?
There wasn't much description.
That was to buy radio equipment and maintain it, and then.
I think I saw that it was, the other, some other counties were questioning how we were using our funding.
Well, not our, but the state funding.
But state, yeah.
And then it gets dispersed out if not, but I was thinking this would fall under that, I don't know why. Okay, I'll look while you talk, how's that?
Any of the maintenance on any equipment used by 911 is covered by the 911 fee.
Yeah, our fee. I was thinking there was a, was there another, maybe there's a tower fee?
The tower fee is what's being questioned by the FCC, which then prohibits us in the state of West Virginia for applying for any communication grants through the FCC until that's resolved. Is that what you're talking about?
I don't know, you know me, I got a one-track mind. Ask out Hilltop.
See, in my mind, I think the tower fee would be completely separate from our communications.
Well, but it's included currently in the way that the money is divided. That first million off the top goes into the tower fund. The tower fund, though, is not just for expanding towers for emergency communications, it's also for private business, private, and US, I'm sorry, and cellular companies to also apply for the grant. And that's the problem. Okay. And, right. That was put in there years ago when we first established the cell fee for 911, because then there was a senator, his name was Shirley Love, out of Fayette County. And he was upset because there was no coverage, cellular coverage, for him to talk on his cellphone from the time he got to Fayette County until he got to the Capitol in Charleston or in Canal County. So, he was going to stop, or he was a pretty prominent senator at that time, and he was not going to let it come out of committee, the cellular fee come out of committee if that was not agreed upon. That that could also be for cellular companies, although as the 911 industry, and I was president of the council at that time, and we strongly disagreed with that, that it went through anybody.
So, so was the logic behind that, that you couldn't, you couldn't actually make a phone call, and you're paying a fee, and you don't even have the access to make a phone call if the cellular towers aren't, aren't built and, and allow you to have access to phone service, so?
Well, that was kind of the argument, but at the same time, the cellular companies didn't want to take on the expense of putting up towers in areas where they did not have a lot of population that would support the expense of that tower being placed.
Correct, right, so this, the grant would offset some of that cost.
Circular kind of thing, for every argument that you could have for it, there was an argument that you could have against it. And now the FCC has said that we are expending the state-wide fee, cellular fee, incorrectly by that tower fund, and they're also looking into it as going to the state police, the amount going to the state police.
But that's all state.
But you paid an additional roaming fee when you switched over to somebody else's system, which kind of added another layer.
But for right now, we're still on the list, on the penalty list, I guess.
I've been on the list before. Usually never get off of it.
I was gonna say, you're probably still on it.
That was the get out jail list.
But what I'm here for today is to present this service agreement, that the annual agreement for Motorola for the coverage. As you can see, over the years, of the last couple of years, because we went to a direct connect using the microwave system and a direct connect center, we've gone from about $94,000 a year, dropped back to the current $39,549 that is presented here. That's about a $1,152 increase over the last years, and the coverage is exactly the same. It's been, this agreement was sent down to Anthony. There were several sections that he and Norwood always in the past have questioned, and I think that he can tell you that those have been resolved.
Yes, there was some questions with bond future councils, limit, I believe, they would sue, I don't know if that's, and those have been changed. Many of these contracts, they're trying to put in a bunch of language to limit their ability to enter the contract.
Okay, so we're all in the same.
And those are their, those were her standard terms and conditions, and that's always been amended or modified for the past several years, those same sections of it.
Go ahead.
Looking for a motion?
entertain a motion.
Send a move to accept a Motorola contract and give our president the authority to sign the document.
Motion to be, second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. And Mrs. Cackley, that was on the wireless feed, so I just sent you an email. Talks about equipment and upkeep, so, I think.
I need to.
And Mr. Davis, the, what we talked about just a while back, the dollar, did y'all know this? There was, since 1998, the West Virginia Code 17A-3-17 charges a dollar renewal on every Class A or G vehicle registration. Fifty percent of it goes to the sheriff, and fifty percent of it goes to the, to us.
Where do we, where does that go?
Where's it go?
That's what we're asking, I just asked Mr. Davis.
Where, where does this, so does the sheriff have another account that he puts that in?
If so.
This is one you can sign.
Okay.
Anthony, you said, you said that we can't bind future councils in an agreement. Don't, isn't everything we do binding future councils to agreements? I mean, we just talked about the financing, doesn't that bind the future council?
I always do.
The bond, well, the council has the right to get out of the lease anytime, of course, it could be bad.
I understand.
That's why we have the building commission.
But I mean, just the, no different than the raises that were given out last week, you know, those bind the council for financial obligation into the future.
Here's, here's that code I was talking about.
Not, not to put you on the spot, but I'm just asking, just throwing that out there, just sounds, it sounds to me like everything we do binds. Binds the future councils to an obligation.
Well, the terms in there weren't exactly, it's, they were a little complicated. What other contracts are having to do with this contract, it's the language they put in there. It's a little more complicated.
Okay.
Alright, so, so the one that the code was talking about is, says DMV license renewal fee charged by the county. Each sheriff shall charge a service fee of a dollar for each renewal of Class ARG vehicle registration he or she issues.
May charge?
Effective July 1st, 1998.
So that doesn't mean it's charged?
The sheriff shall pay one-half of this fee into the county general fund, and the sheriff shall pay the remaining one-half of the fee to the deputy sheriff's retirement fund created in, which, yes, we're paying into that now.
Well, it's the deputy sheriff's retirement fund is shared, it's just like first, someone would decide to buy it.
I remember reading that, what was that on the email? Yeah, I remember reading that, not too long ago.
But I mean, it should be, I said, on a very low end would be 30,000 vehicles, it's probably more like 60,000.
But that, I think it says in May, does that mean, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's what's happening, right?
Well, we need to check into it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sheriff needs. Spend a lot of money. So, alright. Next on our agenda is Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal, request to purchase tasers. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Rachel's gonna be here with us as well, because she's the one that wrote the grant. Ah, yeah, you want her to be your sidekick, don't you? Alright, tell us about what you got going?
Probably years ago, we applied for a BOJ grant, trying to get tasers for our court marshals. The current tasers that court marshals have, only half of them have them, and the ones they have are over 15 years old. Can't get married tax form, can't get purchased. So we went to grant round, Rachel and her staff has done a great job. They were able to get us $10,846 for the BOJ grant. We needed $36,740. The difference would be $25,894 to supply all court marshals with the new state of the art X26P taser.
Well, you have to, in order for us to be convinced the difference between a taser and a, and a bullet from your gun, I'll allow you to tase Whittaker, and you can shoot me and see how we went out.
Sammy?
Well, I told him he could shoot me.
Or if he misses.
Sammy don't miss.
I know those tasers seek me for some reason. I'm okay with, I'm okay with the whole thing, as long as you allow me to move to the other side.
It's down on that end, it's fine.
I mean, oh, no, I mean, we, we've worked on this, this is probably a two-year project we've been trying to get through, and we finally got a little way to buy.
Council will recall, we've been making a conscious effort, and this is the, this should be the very last expenditure that we have. We've been making, been making a very conscious effort to get the equipment that our court marshals need. Most of what we had four years ago had been handed down from sheriffs' departments. So we've replaced all weapons, and we've just took delivery of the ballistic vests next week. That was, that was all funded through grants, so a lot of what we've been able to do, we've been able to get through grants. This BOJ grant for tasers, they've been working on for about ten years, and probably the best we're gonna do. grant we've been able to do. And it's certainly not ideal to have half of our court marshals with tasers that may or may not fire the lifting kit, and then the other half that's not even lifted. So, certainly if the council sees that, we, we encourage you to...
Well, and to echo what Mr. Davis said, Mike said the same thing, that, you know, this will complete the outfitting of the, of all his employees.
A taser?
Maybe you have now? 20 now.
Is that any extra? And what are you going to do with the...
I want some, I got some certain Georgia have sale.
Right.
Got surplus sale coming up, Mike.
And those are, when you hit the button, it's a strict 30-second grant, you can't stop.
Is that right?
Yeah, I think this completes the whole cycle. We've changed the whole face and outfitting of all the court marshal, within a short two and a half years. We've placed the nine millimeters on lobby, now we have new x-ray machines, new weapons, new uniforms, we've done well. We thank you. We've done well. Good luck.
Is our head count going back up now that you got...
Slowly, slowly, back to 300, 400 a day. Third, what we were doing, it's slowly gaining. A lot of the circuit courts doing so much on Skype and Zoom right now. Mass court is starting to pick up. The wrong foods, the wrong property basing, they're starting to...
Now, no, this doesn't have anything, mental hygiene, what are they doing with that? They still got to transport.
And this is, this is an ideal opportunity for us to revisit that and make a good argument to change that as well, I think. Not that it has anything...
We were actually, yesterday we had the jury trial, and we had part of the jury pool in one courtroom, and the bulk of another one in another courtroom, and was able to use the Polycom systems in the courtroom, so the judge could see here, and the jury pool could see here, and using the technology in the courtroom of maintaining of the COVID restrictions and social distancing. It's working, or ask me how, it's working.
Rachel, you have anything else to add?
No, I just, our federal allocation drops over here, because our crime rate is great.
Well, that's, that's an interesting fact, that our crime rate is decreasing, because that, that says another thing that must be going something right, because we know that 80 to 90% of our crimes are, are actually being done under the influence of drugs or alcohol, so that may tie together with our David Port side and our recovery efforts, but, all right. Entertain a motion to approve the expenditures of 26, well...
25, 894.
Yeah.
Actually, it'd be 36,740.
And we will get rid of... On the 10,846.
Where are we calling the month?
We have to fuse this budget, right?
Yes, we will, we will do.
Without a contingency.
We'll take that.
So entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion been made, second, which also includes giving me the authority to sign on behalf of the councilor.
Absolutely, I'd rather you sign than me.
Okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you, Rachel. All right, next on our agenda is Al Davis, County Administrator, discussion regarding 110, 126 West King Street Properties. We've talked about this and kicked the can down the road.
Yes, sir. If the council will recall, in 2019, we made a conscious effort to first vacate 126. We hired a moving company to get thousands of foul boxes out of 126, and we deployed them to the circuit clerk, and got that on track down at 750 Baltimore Street. We then moved, and we got all the, all the debris out of there, so that, that building is now completely vacant. Then we moved voter's registration out of 110 West King Street, and we had them in the first floor of this building, and we had some miscellaneous office equipment and things like that, and now that's all been removed.
Both buildings are cleaned out?
Completely cleaned out. Back in November of last year, I brought before the council a declaration of surplus property to have both parcels declared surplus, and requested direction on the council, how you wanted to proceed, and you decided by consensus last November to take a look, or a later time for further discussion. So now we're halfway through the summer. Certainly we'll be looking at the winter and what we need as far as weatherizing, any kind of weatherization that's required of the building. We've had some issues with, in the wintertime, with homeless behind the buildings, particularly 126. So, at the direction of council, President Coke, and Haver, a month or so ago, I put it back on the agenda today, just to bring it before the council to see if there's any further discussion you wanted to have regarding 110, 126, and if there's anything you want me to do. And we have had some inquiries about the buildings.
I'm only laughing and smiling, not laughing, but smiling actually, because I, I think we may need to table it just a little bit longer.
And, and that's okay, I just don't want something to happen down...
I mean, we, we haven't declared it surplus yet, have we?
No.
We have not.
So we can declare it surplus, I mean, we can go ahead and declare it surplus now, can't we, and then have a...
There's really no reason to, by being a disposing of it.
I'd rather...
But I think that's, isn't that the goal at some point, to do something with it?
Well, I'd rather make sure that we know where our end goal is.
Okay, I'm fair with that.
My question is, is parking lot, the parking lot goes with, with one tenant, it does not belong to the warehouse.
Okay.
That's all, that's all.
Right, it's all due together.
Right. In that place, we get crystal trail, confirm that.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, I think we want to table it until we have some more discussion.
I just didn't want something to happen down there, only because it's one of those situations out there, I mean, we're maintaining it, although very little maintenance is required. I used to want something out of sight, out of mind, so that's why I felt it was perfectly least practical to the council, like, you know that it's still...
Do we need any temporary fencing put up around there?
Well, Jack has taken care of that, so we haven't had a problem. We did find out, as if you look at, this was just within the past, oh, the past month, if you stand in the parking lot and look at the back of the restaurant there, there's actually, there was a little area that there was a tree they had grown up. We didn't realize that there was actually a homeless person living back there with a tent and some other things. So we cleaned that area out, our facilities department went in, there was a sapling and some shrubbery in there, it was on our property. So we actually cleaned that out and removed all the property that was there, so it hasn't, it hasn't been an issue, not to say that more, more won't be, but we, we have had some instances down there where we have had homeless behind the building, only because there's no, there's no traffic in and out, but between court security and facility, it's even pretty close up.
Could, could, could I make a motion to table it until the first meeting in September? Just because I think that we should make some kind of decision before the weather starts to turn and we get something done. That's four weeks from now.
Put it back on the agenda for discussion.
You think it's going to be long enough?
I think that ought to be long enough to make a decision, I mean, I...
At least have a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Any items from the public? If not, Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. President, I'm going to recess.
They are recessed.
Do we still have a 3 o'clock?